Is anybody speaking on a different... I took this off the... No, nobody's speaking on planes. Can't get out of here. Things are like... Oh, not long, sorry!
Where's the eyes? There's gin, yeah. I don't have one of these either. The other bits here as well. Squeezing!
Yes.
I thought you said you were going to use...
I didn't realise! Just trying to refresh my memory of what I said.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the public, members. Welcome to full council meeting on Wednesday, the 8th of August. We will start with item one, a point of absence. The councillor, who was proposed by Joyce, seconded by Sally Anne. All those in favour, welcome. Item two, declarations of interest. Members are asked to declare, if required, one, any disclosureable pecuniary interests they may have on respect to the items on the agenda. Martin?
I have an interest in a planning application, which is item number sixteen, number six, because I live in the right... I'm in my more... There's no pecuniary interest.
Number pecuniary interest on planning, uh, free application for Mr George, as he is an acquaintance. Thank you. That's number nine, I think.
Also, to any other interests they may have on respect to the items on the agenda. And we're reminded to important part of the changes to their, um, pecuniary interests. Item three is minutes of the meeting held on Wednesday, the 11th of July. I'll take them at page at a time. Anybody got anything on page one? Page two? Page three? Shall I have a comment for those please? Sally Anne, seconded by Paul. All those in favour, those who are not voting is myself, Zoe and Peter, as we were absent. All those in favour of shifting, if you're nervous, thank you. And two, that one is minutes of meeting held on the 25th of July. And the only ones to not vote on this one would be Peter, Jean and Joyce. So, uh, anything on page one? Right, so move. I have a second there. Thank you, I'm just Daniel. All those in favour? If you're nervous, thank you. Item four is chairman and members reports. Item five, councillors' questions. Item six is deputations by the public. Uh, what I plan on doing before I take the deputations, um, we're just going to move things around. We're going to take item eight first. So, opposed by councillor Lucas that we suspend standing orders, is that seconded? Yeah, last name? Right, all those in favour of suspending standing orders? Five, seven, eight. Suspend him again?
I'm staying.
Oh, from one observation, that was, um... Okay, so suspension of standing orders, move. So, I will ask, um, I have three members of the public to speak on item nine, which we will be taking next. Um, Mr Quigley, do you want to go first, or do you want to let Mr Hallen go first?
Well, I think as Mr Hallen has seen, the, uh, the larger portion of information to put out there, I think it would be best...
Just to let members know that, before you start, that, uh, quite a few members wanted to speak on this, so what I've agreed with them is, I suppose having everybody say three minutes, Mr Hallen, I'm going to allow him ten minutes. Uh, Mr Quigley then got a few words to say, and Mrs Pilton, if you'd say that. So, Mr Hallen? Over to you.
Okay. First of all, thank you very much indeed for having us. Um, we did put this...
Excuse me, can you stand back, I'll let read. Sorry about that.
That's all right, councillor Lucas. Um, I was just thanking you all for entertainers this evening. Uh, we waited quite a long time, because I first read this in 2017 with Tony Mathias. And, uh, for whatever reason, uh, I don't understand the protocol, none of my co-residents. And so, we lost the opportunity earlier this year, because of, nobody put us forward as a proposal, nobody seconded us, we weren't aware of that. And then, uh, in the last meeting, which, um, councillor Lowe, uh, did an admirable presentation of source, which we really appreciated, but in actual fact, um, there are one or two points that we wanted as a group to get over, um, simply because it seemed important to us. And although councillor Lowe did a good job, there were one or two points of misconception, maybe, we felt that you probably were laboring under. And if I start off, has everybody got the map in front of them? The map, this should be in the pack. Everybody's got that? In the, in the absence of presentation, because I'm sure that we only got time tonight to watch this scene of the presentation. Basically, what we've done is, we've put yellow lines throughout School Court Close, running into Hilton Close there. If I could just take a step back, and take you from Stamford Road, it's thirty mile an hour road, people come off Stamford Road, not thirty miles now, but they come off fairly quick. At the entrance of Thirty Road, Stamford Road, there's a bus stop, which is, it's an unofficial bus stop in actual fact, but we're not nimble, we don't complain about that, because we know that it serves the community, but it's a regular bus stop. So, at a dangerous junction, not necessarily a busy junction, that's in the way, it's a hamster. When you approach School Court, to your left you have a service road servicing five houses, you have a driveway on the right servicing two, and then within three feet, or sorry, three yards, another drive on the left servicing one house. There are in total eighteen vehicles at that point. So, this is a very dangerous junction, let me tell you why it's a dangerous junction. When people come off Stamford Road at the speed that they do, when you're coming out of the driveways, you look left, you look right, you look right, you look left, hopefully there's nothing coming around, so you look left, and then you look right and start to pull out. If there's any line side missing there, if there's a van, for example, down the headside, very often parked on the curb, um, then you can't see anything coming, so you have to edge out further. Now, for these vehicle drivers, that's dangerous, and it's a way, it's an accident waiting to happen, there have been many cloches. I've been involved in a couple of cloches where our neighbour's on the corner. People straddle the curb simply because they feel as though they're doing you a favour, but they're not. Um, my lovely assistant, Bob here, Bob Day, was blocked in. Somebody parked on the curb right outside the gate, so she couldn't get a disability bugger. Now, from our perspective, that's totally unacceptable, to push ladies with pushchairs onto the road, which is what the payment's for, is totally unacceptable. There's a speed hunt there, the speed hunt was designed to slow those cars down, doesn't necessarily always do that, as we all know, because there's a child's playing field. Children, when they've been excited, come out of the playing field, they dart everywhere. When there's a line of traffic, you can't see their little heads, they can't see you, and it's only a question of time. The road itself is only five, uh, five point five metres. When you look at Edmonton, theirs is, uh, six, six metres something, six, six point one, which is wide, they have no dangerous junction, they have five driveways with four cars, or five or six cars. They haven't got eighteen cars in the first ten yards. Then when you go down slip road into School Thor, on the exit and entrance, on that line, which I've been talking about, the sideline, what you have there is another, um, one, two, three, four, five, there's about six driveways with six to ten cars down there. There's a corner to the left, there's a corner to the right. People park their car to go, um, dog walking, which is an unofficial dog exercise area. We didn't know that when we bought that house, doesn't matter, it's unofficial, and I think that the root cause for this council is the fact that you believe that Rutland County Council's parking, uh, changes push people onto Stamford Road, and the Stamford Road residents rose up. You've simply migrated the problem to the Edmonton or the Alberta estate, Edmonton Way, Vicarage Road, Peterborough Avenue, or the other way around, and you left us out. Even Wood, Woodfield, is it, Woodland, Woodland View, have got the entrance that we would have wanted in the first place. As residents now, we know that we are the last road out of Oakham. What that attracts are cyclists that go around Rutland Water, so now we're getting four by fours and vans, getting the bikes out, they're parking there for hours on end, struggling the curb very often. We're getting walkers who walk around Rutland Water, and we're getting the dog walkers who just pitch up again in four by fours, because the dogs are dirty things when it's probably on its winter, that's for sure. And because we are the first road into Oakham, very often we get, we still get RCC visitors parking there, not necessarily RCC employees. Now, we're well aware that, um... Oh, another thing that happened, I almost just found out tonight, actually, that one of the emergency services couldn't get down one evening, and they had to carry the person by stretchers, is that right? Uh, who said that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that. What I am aware of is that Duskin tomorrow morning, if there's a car park on the right, people coming off Stamford Road can't swerve if someone's coming out of their driveway, they'll hit that car, there's no, there's no margin for error. Leonard Duskin, why do you come tomorrow morning? He, if you look at the map, he turns in, he only turns right and empties their bins, and then he reverses all the way up to the Stamford Road houses up here. You okay for that? Absolutely.
Can you show us the answer for the question?
Yeah, sure. They, they come off Stamford Road, and they go into that drive, and they reverse all the way up here. When there's a car park there, they can't get round. I have a photograph, I have a presentation here, which I know I can't show you, uh, I'd like to show you that one, uh, if you'd like to see it, I can show you, but there's no way you can, you can turn around. So, all it does, it goes back up the service road, and then it has to reverse towards the dangerous junctions. So, yellow lines is something that I know that you feel very passionate about, um, the reason why you rejected it last time was, yellow, yellow lines are, sorry, yellow lines are unsightly, they're not unsightly to the residents who live there. Uh, it only pushed the parking issue to Hilton Close, they have residents parking, most of Hilton Close is dropped curve anyway, and we get them parking on the, on the corners, uh, all the way through School Thor Close. And the displacement from, um, RCC has waned, thank you for that, RCC, they still get visitors that do it. So, the request from the residents basically would be the double yellow, not double yellow lines, but yellow lines would be the answer for us, and we would be treated in exactly the same way as Stamford Road, Alberta Estate, Edmonton Way, Vicarage, Peterborough, and Wood, Woodfield, um, and resident parking in Hilton. So, Hilton aspect isn't necessarily a problem, because it's residence anywhere. The, the, uh, houses were built with that road width by David Wilson Homes, with the planner's authority in Oakham, that, uh, parking, you had parked in your driveway, or you had parking facilities behind, usually what Hilton and some of School Thor have. So, like lemmings, and that's what people tend to be, and we saw it with Rutland County Council parking there, if we are to allow this to continue, then the bikers, the walkers, the dog walkers will just emulate exactly what Rutland County Council have done, uh, with regards to their parking, which was the catalyst for our issues. We don't want it to degenerate into, uh, an area where it's unsafe with a very dangerous junction. None of the others have got a dangerous junction like we've got, and none of them have got so many vehicles with such a, a small proximity of that, that junction. And going around the corner, um, we have, one more second, we have, uh...
One more three minutes.
One more three minutes. We have a situation which Helen, maybe you would like to just, uh, relay that.
Yes.
I think you're, you're down to speak, aren't you?
So Helen's on there?
Yes, yeah, yeah, if you finish now, thank you very much indeed.
Well, I, I'm in the unique position of being, I'm actually in Hilton, but if you look at the plan, I come off School Thor Road, on that little road that goes to the play area, um, and so I often see cars parked, obviously straddling the pavement, blocking my exit, my neighbour's exit, we just cannot get out. In fact, I've been late for appointments because I couldn't get out of the drive, but the main concern is the children run out of the play area, the dogs run out of the park, straight down this little road in to School Thor Close, where Mark has quite rightly said, the view is often obscured, a driver coming down there, and they're not always coming slow, would not see a child, a dog running down that road, emergency vehicles, delivery vans, um, collecting donations for heart concerned vans, it's impossible if there's cars parked for long periods of time, which often happens with A, dog walkers, B, cyclist and walking, walkers at Rutland Water, and so if yellow lines are implemented, I urge you to consider doing them exactly as the plan, down the little road and all the way along, because all I can reiterate, I live there and I see the dangers, and losing a child, a dog, or anything would be dreadful. So, it, the, the, Mark has outlined it excellently, and, um, all I can say is, I do hope you'll consider this very seriously, because it is going to be, it's an accident waiting to happen.
Well, I, I'd just like to reiterate what Mark had to say, what, what, especially thank you for listening to this evening. There are not many points I could add to that, other than the fact that, as it stands at the moment, we as residents of Hilton School Thor have no mechanism whatsoever to deal with the situation we were presented with, other than go out and have confrontational meetings with people, as has happened, I don't say the person who's gone out, but the person who's asked, there is anecdotal evidence, um, of people being quite aggressive towards them. Now, that is a situation we don't want to, we don't want that to escalate, and I think, as Mark said quite rightly, all that we're asking for is the same consideration that's been given to other areas where it's been recognised, that because of the actions of others, parking has, has become an issue to residents of Oakham. And what's happening is, we've funneling it down to the narrowest, smallest area in, in the vicinity. School Thor is a finite space. Stamford Road wasn't, Edmonton Road, it caused a problem to those people. We live in a finite space that really, it's very difficult to control with the people who live in that area because of the way vehicles, eh, they've just grown, houses have more vehicles now, so to add the added disadvantage, and purely and simply, to put it purely and simply, all that we're asking for, in essence, is to make the junction at School Thor Close as safe as it possibly can be, and not rely on good luck and good fortune that something doesn't happen. And as far as the yellow lines is concerned, I would rather have yellow lines than a funeral.
Me too.
Right, I have, uh, statement, I suppose, from the chairman, who's, I did say I would read, um, the statement out on his behalf of him being away, um, really, he wanted to clarify some issues for himself. Um, residents and councillor Lowe met on the 23rd of July, residents were looking to councillor Lowe to help understand how other applications with the same issues had gone through and theirs had not, and did not, did understand the reasons behind, but the root cause is not being addressed by just moving the problem on. However, this issue is a real issue, and having taken on the positive comments, and ideas from the last time this came to council, I, and having met with councillor Lowe to look at how best to try and tackle the, the issue in the light of other impact factors, they feel that a new application, which is very similar because of the road layout, has not, because, sorry, it's because the road layout has not changed, or indeed the issue has not abated, was the best approach. The residents would attend, uh, the meeting with views to giving their account and their own words, the additional impact factors that have also prompted this application, when the World Cup took place, there was a noticeable increase in the parking in this area, with the recent proposed fitness equipment going on the site adjacent to the residents' estate, and no apparent parking being provided, the likelihood of users of the fitness equipment will use the estate as a car park. The new application is embracing some of the... The new application is embracing some of the comments from councillors in that a combination of restrictions are implemented. And that the application is supported by the town council, so that at the very least, the residents, the town, county council can work together to help resolve the problems highlighted. So after all that, who wants to start the debate?
I'm removing the items.
I was gonna say, yeah, we need to do both.
Hold on, sorry.
What do you want to do, do you want to do?
No, if, if members agree, I, I propose that we move item nine to now and then we'll come back to working with item seven afterwards. And then we'll probably come. I propose I second it, by Daniel, all those in favour? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, so who wants to kick off the debate then? Peter, you want to?
Well, really, I'd like to ask a question. Um, when the public park on the curb side, um, which is illegal of course, is there any action taken? Do the police come, do the parking wardens come?
No, we're the first road out of Oakham.
Sorry?
We're the furthest road out of Oakham. So it's, it's, it's easy for people to, um, to park the car there. No formal, it's first place in Oakham, it doesn't charge, but I haven't got the other lines. So it's just easy for people to, to leave the car there. And they do do it for, at weekends, by the way, for the whole of the weekend.
Yes, I appreciate that, but is any action ever taken? I mean, do you report the curb, curb side parking?
Yes, I, I've actually reported it and, and I was told, um, that if I blocked in and they actually, they drive right up to the barrier into the children's play area. Which means I can't get the car out, you know, people can't get in. And I was told I could call on the traffic warden, but it might be three or four hours before anybody could attend, which obviously is absolutely useless. So I've got no way, I've got no way, I've complained and spoken to people and I think the police are so busy, they don't bother with parking on pavements now. They just ignore it.
Okay. Um.
We don't need to stand.
Yes, you do, school council.
Yeah, but James not here, sorry.
What? The chairman, yeah.
Oh, for goodness sake.
Yeah, Azro.
I'm not a jack in the box, unfortunately. Right, I have the utmost feeling for you, but you are not the last road in Oakham, I'm afraid. The other side of Oakham is equally as bad.
Yeah.
Not, not Longsdale side, the other side. Where we live, it's frequently, it's like a chicane, the dustbin park can hardly get up. We have elderly, ill, infirm people in our road and when the ambulance comes, which it does on several occasions, it's a nightmare. And although I do want to support you, it's not going to stop because every time we get double yellow lines, more people are going to want them. So it's an absolutely no-go area. A colleague and I went to investigate, because, you know, we didn't know your road, with it being just a cul-de-sac and sort of road. And we were quite surprised that there were empty driveways, that the cars were parked outside the driveways. We also noticed the residents' parking was empty. And this was on the weekend, this was on a Sunday we went. And so we just thought, yes, I can see why, but, you know.
Sorry, did you say the driveways were empty, but?
Cars were on the road next to them.
Yeah.
Well, surely that's.
Sorry, sorry, to interrupt you, it's another question, we're, we're debating now.
No, just saying, what, town?
Yeah.
I find that rather odd.
Probably be in town.
They're probably in town.
Excuse me, Mr Mayor, no, I haven't finished, no. And also, I understood that the play area that we're going to support, I believe, is going to have its own car park place. And if it's not, then I, I don't think we should have, you know, had it, because I don't know how many children live in this direct area. Because you can't just let your children wander across the town in these days, you've got to take them for safety. And so if there isn't going to be a car park there, it's all done.
That play area, that's my point.
Just like to make a comment, I'm not sure about it myself. Um, how much would you say it's, um, an inconvenience or is it a real danger, that, both for me?
Well, I think it's a great inconvenience and it's very, it's very dangerous indeed.
Yeah, sorry, I think, I didn't hear what you said.
You're just asking if it was, if it was an inconvenience or a danger.
It's not the regularity, it's the fact that if one van obliterates the sideline, you can't see, you have to edge out. When you edge out, you, you are creating an accident waiting to happen. And, and they will park on the, they abandon them on the, on the curb. And I hope that it, that they've left you in this room, but it's not that at all, they don't want the wind coming down.
They'll try. Can I just stop you there, because we're not having, I'm trying to get, we're not having a two-way conversation now.
Yeah.
Public, unfortunately, you have had your three minutes, members should not be asking questions, you should be asking questions through the chair. And notices on the windscreen, who's, who's screwed up, did you want to come back?
Yes, I do, yes.
Very quickly then.
Very much.
Sorry, sorry, can I, Martin, I'll, I'll come back to you in a minute. Martin?
Yeah, um, I will stand, but then when I sat down, I know I shut up. Anyway. I, um, have unfortunately not been involved in this because nobody actually approached me. Um, I did leave it with Mr Lowe and we had some discussions with Mr Howan via email. Um, I still, until that statement was read, didn't know what was going on. Um, I have been quite a lot there because you can actually get all the way to where I live from there, when I come from friends from one side of town. Get all the way to Willow Crescent through that state, so I know it very well.
Excuse me, by foot.
By foot, yeah, I don't drive, so by foot. Um, but I had a concern, and one of the reasons why I voted last time, and it's my chance to explain to everybody, against it. Is because we had a number of schemes, which was mentioned by Mr Howan. Um, Woodland, Woodland View is the entrance to the road where I live. All it's done is pushed, sorry, put it clear, all it's done is pushed the problem into Willow Crescent. You have the problem in St Alden's Vicarage Road where we have a, kind of an older population who rely on contractors. They all wanted this residence permit, complete ban of any vehicles, which now causes them a problem. Because Rutland County Council, once you have this, enforce it, it's revenue for them and they are there enforcing it every day. If they have Sky TV come down into their road, they can't be there because unless they can get into the residence drive. If they have a plumber, they can't go there. If they have visitors, they have to go to Rutland County Council and pay for a permit, which is what will happen if you have the route of residence permits of your road. And they've gone, I think nearly two hundred percent this year, it's forty-five pounds, I believe, a year for a residence permit and that's for each car. So that was the reason that I didn't support it, because I see the problems that this parking issue has created. It's become our problem because of changes at Rutland County Council. Jim Clues was a councillor who tried to help residents in my ward, but it didn't come to council then. Rutland County Council changed their process only recently, where we have the form, we're not experts on parking or whatever. So that was just what I see and what I hear is why I voted against your scheme. I'm not sure that I'm changing my mind tonight at all, because I've been there myself, as I was there last night at half past seven. And there was nothing through the top part, but down in Pilkington, is it Pilton Close? Pilton Close, there were three or four cars parked on the pavement. Now, somebody asked a question about enforcement and I have looked into all these things. Once you get double yellow lines, then RCC can enforce it. If people park on the other side of any line, it can be enforced. The only thing at the time the police become involved is if they witness the person driving on the pavement, because that's the offence. It's not a criminal offence to park on a pavement, it's a criminal offence to drive on a pavement. So that's why the police are always sometimes appear to be uninterested, because they can't actually do anything unless they, the officer sees it. So I'll, I'll shut up, but I've.
Thank you, Martin.
I just wanted you to know why I made the decision and it is based on.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, would it be Jean, if you, Jean, do you have to?
Um, yes, it was one of two things, but, um, I've been reading it. Um, I've spent quite a number of weeks, because I have to drive down Stamford Road at least three times a day. Actually monitoring the amount of cars down there. And it, there has only been a log upon the turf. So I wondered if the residents, first of all, had kept a log of when the cars are there and for how long. And whether it's the same cars or whether it's different cars. Um, whether or not the emergency services, you were talking about ambulances, et cetera. Had actually made some sort of statement somewhere to say that this was unacceptable and was dangerous, especially for car owners. Really just to try and get a feel of what, because I'm not seeing any cars there at any time. I was trying to get a feel of what the situation actually was.
Anybody else want to say anything else, Daniel?
Thank you. Um, starting off with, thanks for that, it was really, really informative. And reference that an official bus stop, that's something we probably wouldn't, you'd need looking into anyway. Um, disability buggy, absolutely good to feel about that one, that should never happen, it happens very near to where I live, I live opposite the doctor's surgery. So I'd be with you there. Um, the parking rigs, I understand on that junction, one of the things we spoke about last time, obviously when it came, was the fact that cars aren't supposed to park within so many metres of a junction. But it isn't adhered to by the police service, it's only supposed to be adhered to by the actual, by the, um, by the highways. So it's not actually enforced. So having the yellow lines there will probably make no difference anyway. I'm not against yellow lines, okay, yet there is an element of that here, which I fully understand, but if it involves having yellow lines or having someone spread across your windscreen, you have yellow lines. But, um, a, a lot of us, including just before that night where we debated it, went down there and because we got the paper at least a week before, we spent quite a lot of time going around. And I can only echo what, um, councillor Danny had said, that we barely saw any traffic, but I don't think that's what the issue is, me personally. I think the danger of that junction is more prevalent than anything else. Because otherwise, I'd be, I'd be remiss in thinking this was a unique case, because when you look at places like Durham Drive, they've got a hell of a lot worse situation than Europe. And there's a lot of places around Oakham that I feel could benefit more. Which isn't to say you couldn't, I'm just saying they would benefit more. So my, that's my reasoning for it, not against the other lines, but I just don't think they'd work. Um, reference what I said about the, um, reports from the police service, that's got to be a good way to go. Even if, as you said, they won't do anything about it because they can't witness it. Having a log of events is always better to have when you're presenting evidence, me personally. So that's pretty much what I've got to say about that.
Just, uh, just an observation, because the same thing is happening in my road. The problem with my road is that we're on a school, uh, road. Uh, that this one is not on a school road, they have got just a playing field for children. We have, we have got a playing field for children as well, as well as children going to Catmouth, going to Brookhill. It's the whole of the town that is the problem. Uh, I'm sorry to have to say this, but this is not unique, members and chairman.
Just to, um, echo, um, a part-time will change and mobility speed user as well, and that is a problem throughout the town.
Yes.
Co-parking and it is dangerous and is an issue that needs to be addressed.
Right.
Can I just one quick, hold on.
We're on, no, we're on the way back round and I'm going to allow two more speakers. Anne was first and then we'll allow Anne two minutes and Martin two minutes.
I don't need two minutes, sir.
Sorry, it's just me.
You first, yes.
Right, yeah, I, I.
And then we'll move on.
I absolutely agree with what the reason people have just said, that it is a problem all over the town. We have a school, we are a cul-de-sac, it is horrendous in our road and we have very elderly people, infirm and ill, elderly people in our road. And they, they can't get in, and you certainly can't get out onto Broadstone Road, it's a nightmare. And I just think we could all do with yellow lines, but we can't, we can't all have them. And if there was an accident, I'd never forgive myself, but I, I don't support it because it's not just your road. And when you bought your houses, you could see the width of the road, I'm afraid. And there's all these driveways that were empty with cars parked on the road just outside the houses. So I'm sorry, although I shall never forgive myself if there is an accident, it's not, it's not a one-off case.
Are you a Claire Bond?
Martin, Martin.
Excuse me?
Martin, you'll, let's, let's be, we're moving on.
What I wanted to just reassure the residents, if we can after all this, is this council, sorry, this council many times has indicated to Rutland County Council that it needs to look at the whole of Oakham for parking. So you may not have known that, but we do know the situation and when, and some people have taken it wrong when I said it's not just your road. You know, we, we're aware of all the problems, we've got King's Road, which is supposed to be two-way, you can't drive a car up the middle of it most of the time. And we have persistently asked Rutland County Council when parking issues have come over the years, to look at the whole situation of parking. And we can't as a parish council do more than that. So I'm sorry if you feel that we're letting you down, is what I was trying to say.
Are members of the public artists speaking, Mr. Right, so.
Mr Chairman, um, she only had a minute, and she got three minutes allocated to it.
We've, we've, we've passed on to the, you have three minutes.
I have one question.
No, we don't.
I have one question, which I'll leave you with.
No.
We don't take, we don't, we, we, we are given by the way we work, I'm afraid. Um, I've tried, I've tried to be very lenient with it this evening.
What was the decision process for Stamford Road?
The entire idea of what the council.
Was that, was that a town council? I don't think you were consulting.
Right, so the proposal is, uh, to consider the following proposals and confirm whether or not the town council, one, are in support of the proposal. Got any proposals in a second, if we're going to move forward.
Chairman, can I propose an amendment, Max?
I don't think you can, because we, because we're, we're being, as a consultant to what's on the document, we've had this before, haven't we, where we said we would like it changed? And we're, we're not allowed to, because this is, we're being asked to, to comment on this document.
The trouble is, it's a black and white, it's, it's, yeah, yes, I know.
That's, that's the trouble, yes, this is, this is where we get, the problem we had last time, wasn't if you remember. Um, because it, sometimes it'd be easier for us to say, well, we can support it if it, if this, if it was done like this. But that's not what we're being asked, I'm afraid. Daniel?
Sorry, um, if, whatever the result is now, would it be possible, I'm quite sure on the protocol, is after this, to liaise with the residents? And try and find a workaround that appeases everybody?
The council of those, if he was going to do.
Yeah, we, we, we can only do what, what our, what our, what our government says.
I'm not looking for when it gets pulled back again, if there's a way of sort of getting.
We have, we have the same, we have the same problem on cricket law.
Yes.
Um, so, is anybody moving it or not? In that case, I'm afraid it fails. I'm sorry, but that's the decision of the council, um.
The positive I take out of that is, this human city, when it comes back again.
Never give, as I always say, never give up, it may be, speaking of the chair, it may be, to alleviate the problem is to only have double yellow lines at the beginning of the entrance.
We've got, we've got about five, five yards, we're very sure.
Then, then, then the entrance is, is.
It's entrance, it's both of them.
No, no, if it's, if it's open, so unfortunately with that, as you've just said.
Thank you for your full time and councillor, I, I think thank you for holding for it last time, appreciate that.
If I'm, I know I'm not allowed to speak, but what I would like to say, what I would like to say is our question, just a comment. We're a little bit disappointed it turned into a competition of my wrong choice and your own. We weren't here to speak about, we were here to discuss.
Yeah, I appreciate that. As, as I said, we've had, we've had these before where unfortunately we have to take what's on the paper, we're definitely moving what's on the paper. That's why, I just, it's a little bit disappointing. Thank you very, thank you very much. Right, so we're now going to move back to item seven. Right, item seven, working routes and steering routes. We've got to G, not N, it's B.
I can't hear any of them.
So, can you shut your mouth?
I think they've gone.
So you should have a paper to state the season from there to P P, including U G. Sally, I didn't know what you were doing as well. Sally, do you like, are you taking this one?
Well, there is lack of one, so, you know, we can settle.
Anybody wish to comment?
Yes.
Council, you could please.
I'm disappointed that there has become a rift. No man is an island. This group has now alienated two groups in this town, namely Oakham in Bloom and Oakham Town Partnership. I object strongly to, on the.